Next item, please.
Next item is recognition and acknowledgements. First, we have musical performance by Fortson Symphony Orchestra.
Hello, I'm Lisa Meyer, and I'm the music resource teacher for our district. And the music that surrounds our lives during the month of December is some of the happiest and most memorable music around. It's been a tradition each December that we feature an ensemble from the Dearborn Schools to share some music of the season with you. Last year, thanks to our fantastic videographers, we shared some music through virtual presentations. This year, with precautions in place, we want to bring some of that music to you tonight with the Fortson High School Symphony Orchestra, under the direction of Mr. Dan Taylor. Mr. Taylor has been teaching for 19 years and has been in the Dearborn Schools for six. Some of the pieces that we'll be hearing tonight are Dragon's Den and Believe. Let's welcome the Fortson High School Symphony Orchestra, directed by Mr. Taylor.
School Board, thank you so much for allowing us to highlight our students and for supporting this type of learning. Thank you.
Ms. Meyer, Mr. Taylor, thank you for a reminder of why we need to keep working with the feeders, make sure that there's future students that want to stay involved with these groups. Thank you.
Next item is acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, and thank you, Ms. Meyers and Mr. Taylor. We definitely want to promote the music program in middle school. I will read the donations for tonight. A donation of $185 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for an Apple TV. A donation of $1,050 has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for books. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Baker Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a xylophone ensemble project. A donation of $178.06 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for journals for social-emotional learning. A donation of $764 has been offered to Duval Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the bookroom. A donation of $150 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for bookshelves. A donation of $100 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by Larry and Colleen Beal to be used by the boys' football team. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Big Green to be used to design and build a rain garden. A donation of $500 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by K&amp;M Accounting LLC to be used to purchase $50 gift cards for the monthly staff appreciation program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is empty bowls.
Good evening. I'm Susan Briggs, Dearborn Schools Art Resource Teacher. This is Nicole Reiner from Bryant Middle School, and this is Leslie Curtis, art teacher from Fortson High School. The art department's annual Empty Bowls event was held on November 22 at Park Place Banquet Hall. Empty Bowls was started in 1990 in Bloomfield Hills by Etzel Ford High School alumni and now-retired art teacher John Hardem and his wife Lisa Blackburn. This service learning project showed that art can make a difference. Clay bowls were created for Hardem's ceramics class. Students invited family and friends to enjoy a simple meal of soup and bread, and a $5 donation was suggested. At the end of the meal, the guests each chose an empty bowl to take home as a reminder of the hunger issues in our world, and the money was donated to help feed hungry people in our community. The next year, now-retired art teachers Wendy Sample and Audrey Wilkins started Dearborn Schools Art Department's Empty Bowls, and we have been holding them ever since. This year, we raised over $4,500 from selling bowls at schools, donations, and a tin-can raffle at the Empty Bowls event. And through an online Facebook fundraiser, proceeds were given to Gleaner's Food Bank and Dearborn's Blessings in a Backpack. On behalf of the art department, I would like to thank Wendy Sample for all of her help and generosity, Dearborn Schools Communications Department for helping to advertise our event, everyone who came to the event, volunteers, and participating art teachers and students for making this event a huge success. Donations were made by Park Place Catering, who are really, really generous to us, Starbucks, Blick Art Supplies, the massage therapist at Satva Yoga, Heinz Park PM Rotary, Motawi Tiles, and Rovin's Ceramics. Thank you also to the many individuals who donated items to our tin-can raffle. The idea of empty bowls, which began here in Michigan by a Dearborn Public Schools graduate, now has events that take place in every state in America and in 22 countries to help feed the hungry. The art department would like to give the school board, Dr. Maleko, executive directors, and some others a clay bowl that was made by art teacher Jenny Domino's Dearborn High School students with the theme "Button Up It's Sweater Weather." They have little buttons they made out of clay. So go ahead. Thank you to this opportunity, for this opportunity to speak to you and for your continued support of Dearborn Schools Art Department.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Make sure we leave one for Trustee Barry, to when he comes back from Florida. Oh, I'm picking it for him? Pick me winner. Thank you very much.
Thank you for working on this noble cause. Next is staff recognition, special area teachers.
Good evening. Are we using this one? So this evening, we're going to honor each month, we're honoring a different group of staff, staff members, and this month, we're going to honor our special area teachers. This does not include all the specials, so anyone not honored today will be honored in another month. Today, we're honoring our music teachers, our art teachers, and our special ed teachers, our media specialists, and our PE teachers. Okay, Ross will begin with the elementary enrichment teachers and our media specialists.
Come closer. Hi, everyone. I'm Ross Groover, and I have the privilege of working directly with the media specialists and the elementary enrichment teachers, but I also get to interact with all of our special teachers, many, if not most, of them on a regular basis. And I just want to thank them for the wonderful work that they do with our students and the opportunities that all of the special area teachers provide every day for our students to shine in ways other than just the academics. And so I thank them, we have just a few representatives here tonight, but I want to thank them.
Are you introducing, or you want me to?
You can introduce those two areas.
Okay. So tonight, representing the media specialist? We have Monica Hankins, Dawn Hanson, and Naveen Bazzie. Representing the elementary enrichment teachers, we have Leel Mala. And we have, her real name is Mary, but she goes by Fran, Hassan. I also want to introduce this woman in red back here, who is Kelly Sebastian. She is not an elementary enrichment teacher, but she does work with the elementary enrichment teachers on providing STEAM or STEM opportunities for all of our elementary students. So she was here in a show of support tonight. So thank you, Kelly.
No one go away, I'm sure there'll be a picture. Much gratitude and so, so very much praise for our art teachers, our music teachers, and our physical education teachers. A quote recently caught my attention. It read, "Art, music, and PE has the role in education of helping children become more like themselves instead of becoming like everybody else." That hit home, as someone that was not musically inclined, or artistically inclined, or PE inclined, those are the areas that you have the opportunities to shine, and through the years, we've seen so many students excel in those areas that maybe struggled in other areas. And so that's why it hit home when I read it, and I also see it in my own children now. Our physical education teachers, thank you for teaching the kids about good health, self-care, building self-confidence in themselves and in others, cheering your partner on, partners on, your peers on, especially to the ones that are not natural athletes. Many PE teachers used online time last year as a means to connect to students, but to emphasize, not only as a mean to connect with students, but also to emphasize methods encouraging students' well-being when their worlds felt crooked, to say the least. Thank you for building and maintaining those relationships. We were blessed to have the funding available to include specials and electives in this past summer program, this past year's summer program. It was truly like no other summer program. Our students had the opportunities to experience so many different things that they typically would not be able to experience throughout a summer, and was giving so much credit to the art, music, and PE teachers that enriched the students each day. The specials took the project-based learning that the core content area teachers were teaching, that they were providing to a whole new level, as they do each day of every day of each school year. Again, these are not all the specials, this is one segment of the specials. Thank you for giving us the patterns that are the keys to learning, and if I sang you any more praises, you would ask me to stop. So thank you. I'd like to introduce Miriam and Joel, our PE teachers representing the PE department. Come on up. Miriam Mastercheck and Joel Lesniak. I just didn't want to butcher your name, Miriam. They were described as class act. Thank you. And for music, Lisa Meyer, the famous Lisa Meyer, Dan Taylor, who was leading our FHS choir orchestra today, and Susan Harden. Don't leave us, Dan. And for art, the lovely ladies you just met, Susan Briggs, Leslie Curtis, and Nicole Reiner. Get your certificates. Everyone that's not here is also getting a certificate, and much, much thanks to Joanne Harris. She's on top of the certificates, so thank you, Joanne.
If any of the trustees want to join in on the picture, feel free. Trustee Barry.
Yes, David, you're going to have to Photoshop me into that picture. All kidding aside, I am so happy to see that we're showing respect to our amazing teachers in more ways than one tonight. Just wanted to make that statement. Thank you, teachers, for what you do every day.
Thank you. Next item under recognition and acknowledgement, it's the last, staff appreciation drawing.
I'm very happy to do the happy things today. All right, so we have, much thanks to FSC, they are the company that donated the gift cards for this month, it's $50 gift cards. We had over 600 nominations that were submitted, and the nomination form continues to be open and will be open all year long. And if your name's not selected this month, it might be selected next month. And we, it's on one of those prize wheels with all the names on there. So I'm going to go through, and first, I'll read off the 10 people that are winners. The last one polled is the $100 winner. So we have nine $50 gift cards, and then we have one $100 gift card. For the sake of time, I won't be able to read all the nominations, but I will read one of them, but they're fabulous, really. Lynn Osborne from Michael Berry Career Center. Congratulations, you got a $50 gift card. Bridget Burrochek, and I will read Bridget's nomination after I get through all the names. Congratulations, she's an Etzel Ford teacher. Hiba Abdalbaki, principal at Stout Middle School. Karen Rustam, teacher at Maples Elementary. Amy Candace, our very famous Amy Candace nurse, one of our lead nurses. Nancy Hameid, a media specialist. Michelle Sabarin is at William Ford, she's an art teacher. Carrie Renka, a teacher at Duval Elementary. Khadiji Elsri, a teacher at Stout Middle School. And the $100 winner is Heckmit Salami, a secretary at Stout Middle School. Congratulations to all of our winners. And very quickly, I will read this beautiful nomination for Bridget. Burrochek, I just practiced her last name. So Bridget, this one's for you. Okay, I'll admit, I need the larger print now. "I am nominating my colleague and friend, Bridget Burrochek. Over the last few years at Etzel Ford, both virtually and physically in the classroom, Ms. Burrochek has played an influential and integral role, not only in her students' lives, but in the lives of those around her. She seems to have a way of touching each person's life in a very meaningful way. Towards her students, she makes a point to make each child feel special, heard, and important. She provides them with a sense of security, especially in a time of so much uncertainty. Moreover, her flexibility has been admirable, not only during the pandemic, but also in tailoring demands and the needs of her students. She is able to adapt at the moment's notice to what is needed from her students and her colleagues. Ms. Burrochek exudes a sense of positivity and optimism in the classroom that is often felt by those around her. Even when she is met with barriers or difficulties, her positive spirit seems to shine. I could not think of a better person to be honored for their work. Ms. Burrochek works tirelessly to provide her students with personalized instruction and a sense of self-worth that extends beyond the classroom. She works towards ensuring each student is seen and heard. It is my deepest honor to be able to work alongside her." Congratulations, Ms. Burrochek. I can't wait to meet you.
Trustee Watts.
Is it possible, because I want to be able to hear the other nominations, is it possible that we could put it on the Dearborn Public School Facebook so that the community can hear it as well?
What we planned to do was do a little taping, I believe, of the others. We wanted to do a sample, and then the rest, we'll do kind of a taping and read them as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, there's some just fabulous ones.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Next item?
Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Policy Committee Meeting, November 8, 2021, Board Report 21-48. Finance Committee Meeting, November 8, 2021, Board Report 21-49. Regular P-12 Meeting, November 8, 2021, Board Report 21-50. Executive Session, Close Negotiations, November 18, 2021, Board Report 21-51. Recommended Action, Make Any Necessary Corrections and Move Approval of These Minutes.
So move.
Support.
Support.
All right, I heard Trustee Patliczkoff make the motion, was it Trustee Moszab out with the support? Any additional corrections to any of the minutes? All right, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee De Ambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszab, yes. Trustee Patliczkoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes. Motion carries. I would ask if we could switch the order and do citizen participation before special reports, so people with blue cards have a chance, if they don't want to stick around afterwards, that they can leave.
Sure. No objections. Okay. Citizen participation, citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action can submit a virtual blue card that will be posted on the district's website on Monday, December 6, 2021. 2021, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, or in person by 7:00, 10:00 PM, by submitting a blue card to the board secretary. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, please do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times.
And as we have done in the past, I will set a timer for three minutes for the in-person comments. One thing I'd like to add is, due to the Open Meetings Act, we have been able to allow virtual comments since the pandemic began. As currently written, those allowances are going to expire at the end of this calendar year, meaning that anyone who wishes to address the board will need to do so in person in 2022. While that might mean that you can't give a regular citizen participation comment, it doesn't mean that members of the public who may not be comfortable yet coming into in-person meetings doesn't have the ability, they can't email the board, so we can still hear your voices. We very much do want to. So, we just want to make sure that everyone knows that, starting in January, all comments are gonna have to be done in person, or else just send us an email.
That's what I was.
Thank you. Trustee Moser, thank you.
So, we do have two blue cards. The first one is from Ms. Susan Kusner. Would like to speak to the board about physical therapy in the district.
Good evening, President Thorpe, members of the board, and Superintendent Maleko. My name is Susan Kusner, and I've been in the district, this is my 22nd year, as a physical therapist, and things have changed quite a bit in the fact that we originally had employed PTs. And then, as of 2014, it ended up where one PT had passed on and another retired. And in the meantime, also, the physical therapy schooling is one that now has to be a doctorate level before you become a PT or get licensed. So, that puts a little pickle that I thought of into hiring for the schools, that if you have somebody with a doctorate level coming in, I'm not sure where this is gonna go with regard to salary needs or experience or whatever. I know that I came into the district with many years of clinical experience, and it ended up where I had school experience as well. And I find that in 2014 through 2020, I mentored six PTs that were contracted in four years. And it ended up where not only carrying a caseload, but then mentoring all these therapists as well. And they were contracted, so they weren't, you know, to me, they were excellent PTs. In fact, I recruited many of them to come to the district. And they were excellent with what they did and how they did it. And why I look at this is that I'm for students first. You know, I believe that in 2014, when this whole thing started, that we couldn't hire because we didn't have, first of all, anybody that was applying. And second of all, having the physical therapy situation, being a doctorate level versus a master's versus a bachelor's. So, we didn't have anyone applying because of this. It ended up where I felt like I had the best experience with regard to clinical background and with school background, that I was able to sort of supervise this situation, which I did for several years under the administration that was there. And I felt I did the best availability for not having anybody fall through the cracks. Many of these disabled children come with us. Sure, we evaluate them to be on the PT caseload, and they have to access their academic world. Many, many of them come with equipment as well, so our workload is much higher than just our caseload, especially with each child having their own personal equipment. And I look at also liability and safety as well. If this equipment is not working well, or it's broken, you know, I'm usually the person that's called to repair it, to get vendors in to repair it. And that's where I look at liability, that these children can't ride buses if their wheelchairs aren't working correctly. And if, my big ploy was that we need to hire somebody with equipment and wheelchair background. And we did have somebody last year that didn't take the position, for whatever reason, I'm not really sure. But I think we need to look at this very carefully because we don't have the opportunity of hiring just anyone anymore. And if it's a PT at a doctorate level, what are they, what price are we gonna pay to get them into the district?
Could you please summarize and wrap up?
Sure. I want to summarize with regard to a special project that I've done that was funded also by the Dearborn Education Foundation. And this is something that I've done in the past, beyond and above what I do on a daily basis. It was for a wheelchair vertical lift for a student, two students, that live in the Maple area, Maple School District area. And it took me two years to work with a social worker to get this funded. And now the girls will, it's beginning to start, the construction of this is beginning to start. And I'm just thankful that they'll have warm wheelchairs at the end of this all, versus having their wheelchairs being stored in the garage. So, this is above and beyond what the school district, but I've had, I have so many close relationships with families and their children, and pretty much know probably 80% of the children on the PT caseload. So, I feel that this is very beneficial to look at the whole family, to look at safety, to look at everything, including hiring PTs in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is from Ms. Stephanie Butler, Dearborn. She did not leave a subject, what she would like to speak to the board on.
Hello, I'm sorry about the subject. I didn't fill out the card. But I just came up to talk about, obviously, with everything going on with the shootings and all these copycats. I just wanted to say that I'm displeased that the district put out announcements that they were jokes, because I'm sure that everyone would like to think that they're jokes until the day that they are not. And so, I know there's been a lot of fighting going on at Etzel. Parents are not being informed about it, fistfights, things like that. School resource officers are not even being let into what's going on. This came from a close person who's involved in law enforcement, and these are the reports. I know that he's spoken to several of you, and he's saying that, same thing I'm saying, is that we're on watch right now, and if something does happen, we're gonna have all these things to look back on, all these jokes. And I was, I was even told that the student that did the threat for Etzel Ford, that they said wasn't a threat. My kids haven't been to school. They didn't go Friday. They did not go today because of everything going on. And I heard that student, although you guys said it was a joke, he's being investigated. And so, that's where it's not a joke, and I just think that we need to really open up the communication lines with the parents, and we need to stop hiding and trying to cover things up here, because we do have the right to know what's going on. And we were told that that student's already back in school from his suspension from the threat made at Etzel. So, I don't know who would like to answer to that, or what you guys have to say, but you can't tell parents it's a joke, and then there'd be an active investigation where charges may be coming down the line, because then that's unacceptable. And we hold our kids' safety very high, and we just, just start telling us the truth so we can make decisions, inform decisions about the care and safety of our children throughout the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next comment, Dave informed me that these comments came in late, but they were not aware that they would have to submit those by 7:10, so. A comment from Ms. Alicia Doyle, would like to speak to the board about the safety and protocols for the special needs students.
Hello, my son has been in the Dearborn School District since second grade. And all this time, he's been in the special needs classrooms. Anytime they've had any drills for the rest of the school, these children are not being taught the way the other ones are. They are told to sit still and be quiet. Most special needs children cannot be quiet and cannot sit still. My son now is in Etzel Ford. I live in fear every day now. I have trouble sleeping because they are sitting ducks, sitting in that classroom. I want to know why, that there's not better doors on these classrooms. A metal door, small window. You pop the window out, you can shoot every one of those kids in that classroom. It is scary to think of as a parent. Some of these children cannot flee like other kids. You have problems with them following instructions. These children need every day, and I understand not scaring them, but they need to be taught the protocols every day to drill it in their head in case of an emergency. You can't just do it once and done, and they're gonna remember it, because they're not. I've been working with my child for years. I also don't understand why, as parents, like the lady in front of me said, we're not told when certain things are going on, the kids hearing in the school. Because even though my son is special needs, he comes home and repeats things to me that he hears. Now I have trouble with him getting into school. I kept him home Friday. I had trouble getting him to school Monday. Don't know about tomorrow since he's heard things. So, if anybody could help, maybe make things safer in there, there's nothing to hide behind in his classroom. Nothing at all. And it's scary to me as a parent, and it should be scary to other people too, because these special needs kids are being kind of left out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next comment is from Ms. Gillian Norrie. Would like to speak to the board about school violence and student safety.
Me and Eva are gonna be talking together. She has a card, too.
Okay, she does. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Good evening. This topic is a very serious issue that needs to be more addressed by the students. You've heard from all the parents, the teachers, the administration, but I want you to hear it from the student's point of view. What happened in Oxford was tragic. It took a toll on everyone. It was finally a wake-up call, and this is something that needs to be talked about more. Regarding mental health, that has been a topic for a very long time now, and when COVID hit, a lot of kids got mentally drained. Not much was done, but it was also hard because we were online. But now we're back in school, and what is being done? I understand we have counselors, and we have other adults in our building that we can go talk to, but it's not always easy for some. Students will push it away, keep going, and after a while, it starts to affect them in their everyday lives. Something needs to be done to help this situation, because the cause of many of these situations is dealing with individuals' mental health. Moving on, our school's security is not at all where it should be. On Monday, November 8th, I texted my dad and asked him if he could bring me food for lunch. When he got to the building, he didn't know where to go, so I went to the hall and was surprised to see him standing there. I asked him how he got in, and he said he just walked in. The doors were open. My dad's a very good man, would not hurt a single soul. But think about it, what if that wasn't my dad? It was a random person with thoughts of harming our school. Instantly after hearing about Oxford, I thought about that situation. If my dad could come into school to simply give me food, could anyone get in? That is a problem. We aren't taking our security serious. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but those camera buzzing in systems were built to check and know who exactly was coming into our building. It's scary to think and know that just anyone can walk into my school. I shouldn't have to live in fear that when I walk out of my house, I won't ever be able to walk back in. My family shouldn't have to live in fear that when they send their children to school, they're ever gonna see them again. I shouldn't have to live in the fear where I might get out and my brother might not. I cannot live with myself, but that is my exact fear. We need to spend our money on things that are gonna protect us. We need to work on our security to protect us. We roughly spend seven to eight hours at school every day, and it should never cross my mind of what to do if someone comes in. This is a problem that needs an instant solution, because sadly, this is a reoccurring tragedy that I pray I will never have to experience. Moving on, the student who sent the prank threat on our Etzel Ford nap page was caught, but here's the problem I have with that message we've received. After they were caught, after they were caught, and I quote, "The police were able to locate the source of the comments and the individual that made that post. This person may now face criminal charges," quote ended. The word I have bolded in this is "may." The person may face criminal charges. Why is that not common sense that they should get charges? That is a threat, and in a school, a threat is an automatic detention, suspension, et cetera. But that was something that involved the lives of every student that walks through that door, and you're telling me that they may face charges? To add to that, the post on the city of Dearborn is stating that people who make fake threats will face possible charges. Again, you can threaten the lives of many, and it's a question if you're gonna get charges. That is completely unacceptable and very concerning to know something can threaten to come to harm our school, and something may be done. To add to that, two schools, one being in our district and the other being in Dearborn Heights, received threats today. Why was that not a motivation that maybe the situation is getting out of hand? Yes, they may be jokes or not actual threats, but if we keep running to that conclusion, these tragedies are never going to end. If this message is not influenced that something needs to be done and fixed, I don't know what is, because now you've heard it from the views of everyone, the parents, the teachers, and now the students. If it's really students first, no one in their life would be fearing at school. I want to leave you with this. I never in my life want to have the fear of one day I have to text my mom under a desk telling her I love her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next comment is from Donna, Ms. Donna Smith. Would like to speak to the board about student code of conduct or bullies, consequences after three or more exclusions.
Exclusions? Sorry. Hello, board, thank you for having me. I want to disclose, I am an employee of the district. I'm a parapole, but I'm coming today as a mother. And I just wanted to read. I, I see things in a different light now, working in the district, how you just see the same kids getting over and over in trouble, and you just, you wonder what's going on. But after all of this, I just wanted to feel like I could share how I feel about it, just consequences. Consequences on repeat offending of bullies. When is enough enough? Do we have an updated, if any, suit of conduct, student code of conduct in plain language, easily accessible? I looked today on the district site. I couldn't find one. I'm sorry. I'm nervous. We need to see consequences in black and white, where students can have faith in the administration for taking care of and following through with the reports and mental well-being. We hear you say offenders are being dealt with, but to what extent? To what extent are our teachers and building administrators being supported for following through with disciplinary actions? We value everything they do for our children. You've seen it as rewards the teachers receive today. But please let them feel you are not only appreciate them, but that you support them, not through words, but by actions. Our kids are scared. On Friday, I came, four children came up to me crying that they were scared, just because of the events of Oxford. Our kids are scared, not of the bullies, they're scared of the victims of the bullies. They're scared that little Joe is going to retaliate on the bully of the day. And just what happens, is happening, and what I'm seeing myself, is that these bullies are getting sent home. They're getting a little, you know, sent home for three days, but the very next day, they're coming into the schools. When are our kids going to be relieved of these bullies? Their kids, they're scared of the kids snapping, because their bullies are getting sent home time and time again, only to return with an opportunity, opportunity to bully again. I understand that every child has a right to an education, but why are we letting a few kids that do not respect that privilege impact the well-being and learning environment of our others? And also, I just wanted to state, do we have an estimated timeframe for the Alice Protocol to be in place? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is from Mrs. Pam Brown. Would like to speak to the board about curriculum.
If it's a good thing, can I say a staff member's name or no? I don't, I just, okay. First, I want to start off saying, Fortson is awesome. Ms. Alcandre and Mr. Birch are awesome. The problem that I'm presenting has been taken care of, but it's a curriculum issue. After everything that these kids have gone through these last two years, my daughter's class was given an assignment to write their own obituary. Does anybody else see a problem with that? I kind of thought it was just me, but I spoke to a couple people, and even Ms. Alcadre was like, you know, she said it shouldn't have been done. And so I guess it's actually part of the curriculum. I found that out after the fact. Ms. Alcadre said she was gonna take care of it, and, which she did, like I said, you know, I have no issue there. But why is that part of our curriculum? For kids to write their own obituary? You know, am I the only one that has a problem with this? You know, I mean, everything that's going on, these kids are, they're doing it. You know, I just, how do we fix this? Is there, who do I go to? Is there a board for the curriculum? I have never, I don't know, so.
We can, we can take care of it.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'm fortunate with the, you know, Ms. Alcadre and Mr. Birch, they're awesome. You know, there was never even, you know, any doubt that they would help me, they did. But I just think, you know, if other parents don't stand up, you know, I just don't think it's right. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all for the physical blue cards.